Whoa buddy, put that thing back in its holster. We haven't gone anywhere.
I don't understand.
Check out the MichaelDukesShow.com for information on how to get access to the podcast.
Welcome to the party pal.
The Michael Dukes Show.
The greed and the entitlement is astounding to me.
What more could you want from a low budget radio program?
This is a dumpster fire.
Now just BS.
It is time to get a new perspective.
We know just what you need and we've got just the cure. Open wide and prepare for steaming hot cup of freedom.
I just don't fathom it.
The Michael Dukes Show, streaming live across the world.
Live around the world on the internet at MichaelDukesShow.com and across the state of Alaska on this your favorite radio station. And/or FM translator. Good morning. It is the Michael Duke Show. Where we talk about issues concerning you and the state of Alaska and everything else. You know, that's important around the, around your town, around the community, around the state. And more. Good morning and welcome to the program. Thank you for coming in for this Thursday edition of the show. This morning, we've got headlines from around the state for hour one. We may have a surprise guest or so. We're gonna have to see how that works out. See if it really happens this morning or not. I'm not gonna really get into it unless it pops up. If it happens, I'll let you know. Otherwise, we've got a lot of headlines to cover. And then in hour two today. We're gonna be talking with Nick Beggage III, who is a candidate, of course, for US House of Representatives. Running against Meli, Mary Pelletola, Melly, Mary Pelletola in next year's general election. And we'll be talking with him. In hour two today, he'll be joining us to talk about all the big news that's fit to print. And we'll, we'll cover that with him and have a, have a good discussion there in hour two. So it's kind of a full boat of, a full boat of stuff today. Here on the program. I wanted to start off this morning with some sad news for the. Well, for the show, for the common sense core listeners, for the folks who are members of the common sense core, which is our support club and our fan club here. On the program, the passing of, of a good friend of the show and also of Terry and my personally. Sandy Blewett, who has been following the show for my must be 20 years now. She was a fantastic lady and frequent contributor, always there in the morning on the shows, always in the chat rooms. Terry and I have known her for many, many years. She was involved in IDEA, which was the homeschooling program. That our kids all went through. She was there in the Fairbanks office for many years and then retired and has been a. Proud supporter of the show for a long time and she passed away here about a week ago. And just, just found out about it yesterday. So I just wanted to. Wanted to dedicate the show today to her. She is an amazing, she was an amazing woman and lots of passion, always bubbly, always smiling. And, and she will be missed. So rest in peace, Andy and Godspeed. She, she's gonna have a, she's got a big hole here where she left it with us. So. Showed today dedicated to Sandy Blewett, who was a, just a fantastic lady. So that's a sad piece of news for today for all of us. The world is a little darker place because she's not in it anymore. All right, um, let's, let's start to look at, let's start to look at what we've got coming up in the headlines today. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Matsu Borough School Board. We're, we're gonna talk about TikTok, the lack of a special session this year. The latest ruling out of a US District Court in California. On gender policies in school, which are all, these are all pretty interesting stuff. And the first painting from Bob Ross, which I kind of a, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm digging it. This is, this is kind of the piece of good news that we, that we need here. This is the kind of good news we need today to get our day off started. So maybe we'll start with that one. A painting from the very first episode of Bob Ross's PBS show, The Joy of Painting. Has been found and listed. The cost for those happy, happy little trees. Hold on to your wallet. Nine point five seven million dollars. Just, I mean, just throw that out there for a minute. Nine point five seven million dollars. The painting is called A Walk in the Woods and it bears Ross's signature at the bottom. It was painted live on the air in January of 1983, episode one of The Joy of Painting. Nearly 400 episodes of The Joy of Painting. But this was the very, very first one. Ryan Nelson is the owner of Modern Artifact, a painting, a, a gallery in. Minneapolis, Minnesota. The painting, he said, right here is the most important painting. You could call it the rookie card of Bob Ross. This is the painting. Painted on season one, episode one. He said he bought it earlier this year from a PBS volunteer who was there in the studio during the filming. The volunteer said she bought it at the station fundraising auctions, just a month or so after it was painted. He said, he estimates she probably paid less than a hundred dollars for it at the time. Can you imagine? That's a hell of a return on investment. You know, you pay a hundred bucks for it and 30 years later, 40 years later, it is worth 10 million dollars. After the first episode premiere of the show, went on to do another 400 plus episodes and is a cultural zeitgeist. That's a word from a paper here. The owner said that even though he listed it for sale, he's in no rush to part with it. He said he would like to share it with a museum or a traveling exhibit. He actually had, he, there's a video story that goes along with this and he actually had several other Bob Ross paintings that he's collected over the years. But this is number one, episode one, the first one from Bob Ross. Which I always felt a little bit of kinship with Bob Ross, not that I'm a painter or anything, but that he was, you know, he was out here, he stationed at Ileson Air Force Base. And he took up painting while he was here to try and, you know. To try and beat the doldrums or the cabin fever or whatever. Anyway, it's always so much fun to watch Bob Ross. Although it is a little disconcerting when I was, I had to go to the, when I got sick a couple of weeks ago. And I was down at the urgent care, they had a TV there and it was playing Bob Ross, all dubbed in Spanish. That was disconcerting. Cause I couldn't understand anything he was saying, but I was still watching the painting. It was still there. It was. You know, one of those things, but the first painting from Bob Ross, 10, nine point five seven million dollars. Man, kinda makes you wish you checked all them garage sales around Ileson, right? Out there in North Pole. You check all those North Pole yard sales to see if somebody's got an old Bob Ross painting that nobody knew about. Anyway, that's the, that's, that's the, that's the happy news today. Happy, happy little trees going on there. Well, we knew it was probably not going to happen based on all the commentary and discussions and the soundbites and the disdain that. Legislators in general seem to have for the public. But the Alaska Legislature is not going to meet in special session this fall, prior to the start of the session. To discuss a long-term fiscal plan for the state. That was gonna be the, you know, that was the idea that was just not going to happen. Jeff Turner, who's the communications director for the governor. Said by email that Dunleavy asked the Senate President Gary Stevens and the Speaker of the House Kathy Tilton to see if there was. A package of ideas that they could agree upon in a fall special session. And the answer to that apparently, according to James Brooks from the Alaska Beacon, was a resounding no, no. According to, at this point, the legislature has no significant, has not shown significant interest. In coming together to work on official fiscal issues. Accordingly, the governor is not going to call them into special session and waste time and money. That's great. Gary Stevens says that's not going to happen. And when he was asked about it on Wednesday, that's not going to. Can I just, I mean, I can just kind of hear the arrogance in that statement. I just, maybe it's me. That's, it's probably me. Let's just face it. It's probably me projecting my dislike of the policies of the man. I've never met the man in person. I don't think I've ever actually even spoken to him. But, cause he's ducked every opportunity and every offer that I've had to have him on the show, even during election time. But I just, I feel like there's arrogance come just in that statement alone. That's not going to happen. There's really no consensus right now. There's lots of plans out there and folks have lots of ideas. He said that they'll see what lawmakers will have to, to look at when it percolates to the top and the regular session begins. Kathy Kilt, Kathy Tilton said continued disagreement over the elements of the comp plan. Have members of the house now preparing to advance bills separately rather than as a comprehensive whole, which again has been part of this whole problem. From the beginning, the single subject rule, which they're trying to stretch to the limit, I think. Quite honestly, when you're dealing with, when you're dealing with fiscal matters and a comprehensive plan, I think that is one subject personally. I think that there could be an argument to be made that that is one subject. There may be different components of it, but it is a single subject. That's been the challenge right now is that they're taking these a piece at a time. And as soon as one crosses the finish line and then gets folded and spindled and mutilated, like what happened with Will Stapp. And the spending cap bill last year, that's what the problem is. She said, we realize that we don't have the numbers to come to a consensus on a full plan with lots of components. She says, maybe we'll try and focus on something that takes care of the PFD issue like HJR seven, which is House Joint Resolution seven. Which would set the PFD into the constitution and pay it according to the law as it goes through. Andy Josephson said that he's open to the idea of a constitutional guarantee, but the sticking point is amending the constitution. To amending the constitution is going to be first reaching agreement on the payout formula. Well, there's already one in place. But let's not, let's, let's just not pay attention to that. Then Delaina Johnson is quoted in the, in the article here as co-chair of House Finance. She said, the core of the issue is whether legislators are willing to authorize taxes in order to pay for larger dividends. This again is a phrasing issue. And I, I mean, it seems like every time I talk about Delaina, I. I feel like I'm, I'm not trying to beat up on her, but again, you've fallen into that classic trap, the first of which is to never fight a land war in Asia. The second of which is that somehow it's either a PFD or a tax. Which is really not the, it's really not the thing. The PFD is supposed to be the PFD. It's already paid for out of the earnings. A tax would be something completely different. A tax would be paying for services that you have already, but she's. She says, I think there's a disagreement. I think it's throughout the legislature about the idea of whether there should be a tax to pay out a PFD and that's the crux of it. It's not, the PFD should be paid as, as lined out by the permanent fund dividend statute and law and rule. That that is Alaskans fair share of their money because, just because you've overspent, not you specifically, Delaina, but because. The legislature has overspent over the years and overrun their current sources of revenue. Does not mean that you should be able to then take that money from people without any kind of, you know, it's taxation without representation essentially. And then to make the argument of, well, if you want the PFD, there's gonna be a tax. That's not the, that's not the proper argument. And, and the Republicans that keep spouting this, you guys drive me crazy. Because the bottom line here is that we are spending more than, we are overrunning our revenue. For years, for 35, 40 years, that PFD formula worked just fine. Until you spent more than the state was receiving in revenues. And then you look at that big juicy pot of money and said, oh, we could take some of that. Instead of facing the music back in 2016, 2017 and realizing that we were spending more than we're taking in and it was unsustainable. So stop with this poussoir about whether or not it should be a tax to pay the PFD. The PFD is fully funded in the earnings reserve account. You just decided, you, the legislature just decided that it was easier to do that than to go to the people and say, we need more money for all these state services that you want. It, it is the most infuriating in, cause you couldn't tell. It is the most infuriating argument that I hear all the time. And then of course, later on in the article, there's another quote that says, she says, honestly, when we're sitting here looking at nearly a hundred dollars a barrel, the thought of implementing either a sales tax or an income tax. I think it's gonna have a hard time getting traction. Yet at the same time, Brooks goes on to say, in previous years, some lawmakers have cited low oil prices as a reason to oppose new taxes. It's all about opposing the new taxes. And you know, having, you know, everybody have skin in the game. Or reducing the size and scope of government to match our income. It's a, it's an avoidance. That's what it's about. This whole thing is about avoidance. It's about avoiding telling the people that we're spending way too much on state government. And we just don't want you to know about it. We just don't want you to feel the pain. We don't want, you know, whether it's the top 20% or whether it's the middle or just the main, whoever it is. The bottom line is you're avoiding the problem. The problem is a mathematical problem. You are spending more than you take in. And instead of saying, boy, we're spending more than we take in, we either need to generate new revenue or whatever, then they tie, then they say, well, you know, do you want a tax or do you want a permanent fund? I want a permanent fund because that's my share of the revenue. And if there's a tax on top of that, you guys will have to pay the fiscal currency or the, the political currency, a political capital to make that happen. Or you'll have to reduce the size and scope of government to match. One of the two. Okay. Gotta go. Uh, back with more. The Michael Duke Show. Common sense, liberty-based, free-thinking radio. We will return with more in just a moment. Don't go anywhere. Nick Beggage coming up in hour two.
If you missed the show, you can listen to it on your time with Dukes on demand. Oh, and it's free. Like America used to be. Streaming live every weekday morning on Facebook Live and MichaelDukesShow.com.
Okay. Good morning, good morning, good morning. Bill Walker is the person most responsible for the increased size of the permanent fund. Wow, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. Um, all right. Bob or Ross? Bob Ross, Bros. We call him Bros around my house because he's Bob Ross like a boss. He's Bros, Bob Ross. Good morning, good morning, good morning. When are school board elections? If you aren't a resident of the city. Within the Matsu, the school board elections are Tuesday, the third, 10, 10, the October 3rd. Okay. What a show hypnotic. What? I'm sorry. Let me just see. All right. Bob Ross, the Grange Hall has Bob Ross gold pan on display. The Grange Hall in North Pole. That's cool. I can only like comments, no emojis available. Bill's like, he's been restricted on emojis. He can't, he can only do, he can only do like, he can only, that's what it is. Paul says he's lived in Kodiak for 33 years, never even seen Gary Stevens. There you go. Never get between a politician and a pot of money, says Brian. Yeah, I, I agree with that. I agree. All right. Bill's see. Good morning, good morning, good morning. That's the way the rest of us lives is Gordon on a budget. Yeah. Walker slowing, okay. Harold is trying to lay some logic, some Harold logic on us here. Walker's, uh, it's a fact. Walker slowing of the PFD resulted in increasing the size. It, yes, it increased the size of the earnings reserve. Yes, it did. And did it overall create a larger return in the long run because he sucked a billion dollars a year out of the economy for three years running? Absolutely. Was it the right thing to do? No, that would have continued to grow in and of itself. That money doesn't belong to him. What I'm saying is the reason I said that was the dumbest thing ever is because sure, when you don't spend the money or you withhold the money from the people and the fund grows. Sure, that's increasing the size of the permanent fund, but that's not the way it was intended. That was my point. Matsu elections are November 7th. I thought they were on the, okay. So I apologize. Matsu elections are on November 7th, not the, the, they're not the same as the municipal elections. Oh man, we should just all get it together. Between Anchorage being in April and now Matsu being in November and everybody else being on October 3rd, I'm like, somebody could just please get their poop in a group. All right. There you go. Standing tall should call a special session to formulate a constitutional term limits bill since we can't do it as an initiative. Good luck with that. Good luck with that. I don't think he's gonna take a step out there. Yeah. Uh, October 3rd is city elections in the city of the, in the city of Wasilla apparently. See in Fairbanks, all the municipal elections, the borough and the city elections take place on October the 3rd. Then the general elections happen, you know, in November, but here apparently they've broken it out until October for the city and November for the municipality, for the borough. Anyway. We'll see. We'll see, we'll see what happens. The fund is where it's supposed to be. So Harold's all okay with Bill Walker taking all that. He's excited about that until he's not. And then he complains about. People not fighting for the PFD. I get it. I get, I see where you're at right now. I see where you're coming from. I see you. I see what you're doing. Yep. Playing both sides of the issue. Smart. That's what the best trolls do. All right, here we go. We're gonna jump back into it. The Michael Duke Show, common sense, liberty-based, free-thinking radio. Like and share, like and follow. Do all the YouTube-y things. Let's, let's get it. Let's go. Here we go.
The Michael Duke Show, not your daddy. Wait, sorry. Not your daddy? Ooh, not your daddy's talk radio. I was scared for a second. Thought we were going down. Here's Michael Dukes and the show.
All right. Welcome back to the program. It is the Michael Duke Show. Oh my God, I could keep going on this for a while. Anyway, no special session this year was the long and the short of the last conversation we just finished up with. And again, this argument that somehow we have to tax ourselves. It's the only way we're gonna pay a PFD is, you know, it is what it is. It's just that it is, it is the lie that keeps getting repeated. It's the lie that, it is a lie. Because the permanent fund is fully funded. The permanent fund dividend rather, is fully funded by the earnings reserve. They have just chosen to continue to spend that instead of coming to the people and saying, we need more money. For the services that you're requiring. And because we're too afraid to come to you and say, we need more money, we're just gonna take it from your PFD. Because you whimpered a little bit when it happened in 2017 under Walker, but you didn't do anything. All right. I'm not gonna talk anymore about this because this is just gonna piss me off. So anyway, there you go. No special session. End of story. One more person makes that whole thing about it's a tax or a PFD. I'm just gonna. Okay. Uh, what else we got here? Let's talk schools. Let's talk schools for a minute. So I have, I've got some good news. And I got some bad news. Uh, which do you want first? I suppose we'll start with the good news. The, the good news is, is that finally, somebody. Is calling a semi-halt to the madness that we're seeing in the public school systems across the country. And it's one of my favorite judges. This guy is a hero. This guy is a mensch. US District Judge Roger Benitez. Now you may recognize that name. Judge Benitez has been the one that has made a lot of those pro, what we consider to be pro second amendment decisions in California. Like on the, like on the assault weapons ban and on the magazine capacity ban and all those. He's the one that basically said, looked at it, said, you guys are not making your case, state of California. You are not making a, this guy, again, he's the hero we need. US District Court Judge Robert, Roger Benitez wrote in his September 14th ruling in San Diego, struck down a policy. That prevents schools from letting parents know that their children want to change genders. And I quote, a parent's right to make decisions concerning the care, custody, control and medical care of their children. Is one of the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests that Americans enjoy. Unquote. Yes, this man is a hero. He said that when a school learns that a student has questioned his or her birth gender or identified as transgender. School officials must notify the parents, even if the student objects. He sees the notification duty, the same as when the school would be required to notify parents or guardians. If a student had a concussion during a soccer practice or was the victim of a sexual assault or has suicidal thoughts. A parent's right to make decisions concerning the care, custody, control and medical care of their children is one of the oldest of the fundamental liberties interests. That Americans enjoy. Oh, this guy, it's just, oh. The ruling comes after Governor Gavin Newsom is again taking action against school districts that pass pro-family parental notification policy. Imagine the governor of the state of California and the state attorney generals has been suing school districts that have a parental notification policy. They've been going after them with public funds and your, you know, and their money, not our money, but the public's money going after these school districts. For daring to notify the parents about what's happening with their children. Uh, in July, a US District Court Judge in Sacramento threw out a lawsuit against the Chico Unified School District. For a similar policy that prevented parents from knowing if their children were going through gender transition. The judge said the venue of the federal court was improper and it should be taken up with the state legislature. A case this month in San Diego that. A case this month in San Diego, uh, that Benitez ruled on involved the Escondido Unified School District policy that says teachers may not disclose to a parent the fact that a student's identity as a, that student identifies rather as a new gender or wants to be addressed by a new name or new pronouns or whatever. Under the policy, uh, accurate communications with parents is permitted only if the child gives its consent first. And the judge said, uh, uh, no. Now, the Escondido policy is similar to the one that exists in the Anchorage School District, which limits what parents may know about their children. Uh, once those children are under the control of the public school system. Again, recent number 416, why you should probably not have your kids under the control of the public school system. But again, this is good news, uh, because this is a big, I mean, this is a district court. This is district court. This is not the circuit court. This is the district court. But it is good news that somebody is finally calling a spade a spade and saying what kind of madness this is is that you want to fundamentally block one of the oldest fundamental interest, you know, liberty interest that Americans enjoy. Basically the right to make decisions concerning their children. Uh, you know, I don't need no damn village to raise my kid. I can do it just fine all by myself. So this is good. And again, California, this is, this is the people's republic of California. That it, pretty shocking that a judge there is coming out with something. But again, Benitez, definitely the hero we need right now. We definitely the hero that we need at this exact moment. That's for sure. Then we go on, that was the good news. So that was the good news on school. Now we move over to the bad news. And, um, I got some, I got some things to say about this. New changes for public testimony during Matsu Borough School District Board meetings started Wednesday night. Back on September 6th, the board voted unanimously to implement a lottery system if over 20 people sign up to speak during public testimony. According to the Kathy McCollum, she shared during the board meeting on September the 6th, she's one of the members. She said, we added in the lottery solely to make it fair if more than 20 people sign up. It was not in any way used to limit who can speak, except of course, it is meant to limit who can speak in a public setting with cameras and other people and the pressure. They basically said, well, look, I mean, under the new rules, if you're not chosen in the lottery, you can still, still submit your comments for written comments for the record. You just can't speak. See dozens and dozens and dozens of people would show up at these board meetings to have their comments, to be, to have their, their, their moment in the sun, to be able to have their fair share, to have their say. Their two minutes or three minutes or however long the board allows them to speak in each one. And when you get 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 100 people show up, all of a sudden there's a lot of, I will tell you, again, having served on a borough assembly, I could tell you that when the room is full of people and it's person after person hammering away at points of something that you are about to, you think about it. Now they're saying, well, if there's more than 20 people, we're just going to have a lottery and only 20 people get to speak. The rest of you can submit your, rest of you peasants can submit your comments through the written system and send us emails. I could tell you right now, public verbal, public testimony is much more impactful than written testimony. I mean, for me, it was for me. I mean, I would read the emails of the commentary or the testimony or the, the comments that people sent in, but when they are in there, especially when it's a hot button issue and there is testifier after testifier after testifier coming up and hammering away at the same points, it definitely had an impact and the school board does not like what's going on. School boards across the country right now, they're a little bit under siege and they have no one to blame except themselves. For policies that in the most case make absolutely zero sense to many parents. And then to treat parents like, well, what did they say? Domestic terrorists? That was some of the comment. Now it wasn't here in the state, but across the country as more and more parents get wound up about this kind of stuff. But this is just another way to limit the public input into the system. This is insane. I mean, yes, there were times at, uh, you know, at a borough assembly meeting where there were 50, 60, 70 people signed up and it was hours and hours of public testimony. But you know what? That is the public's right. That is their process. It is our duty as elected officials to listen. But see, they, they want to limit that. They want to limit that input. And who decides where the lottery is? Is it, I mean, who's picking the names? Who's picking the, you know, who's picking the numbers? Only 20 people can testify? I mean, so they're, they're trying to limit it because I think it's a three minute limit. So they're trying to limit it to an hour of testimony only. I think is what they're doing there. And part of this is because it has been such a poo parade in the Matsu with the school board and everything that's going on there. These school board meetings have been lasting hours because people get, because people are upset. So your answer to people being upset is to then go ahead and reduce the ability for public input? I, I mean, this is, it, it, oh, it's just, it's fair. No, no, it's not. No, you're trying to control it. You're trying to dismiss the public testimony and not have to face the scrutiny of these crowds. I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with you. If I was a parent and I had kids in the school, I would stand down there and demand that they hear my testimony, whether I got called in lottery or not. That, I mean, what are they going to do? Call the cops and escort you out of the building? Okay. I'll make a stink about it. If my kids were in that school and I was going to do it, I'd make a stink about it. My voice should be heard. I mean, all of those voices should be heard, whether they're pro or against, whatever the issue is. You have a duty and a responsibility to allow people to speak in the public square on those issues. And yes, they can still send in their written comments, but I know, I tell you for real, a hundred percent, as God is my witness, that public verbal testimony has more impact than a strongly worded email. Again, this is in the Matsu, the red Matsu, right? Oh, the most conservative area in the state. I'm telling you, that's a bourgeois. That is some baloney sandwiches right there. You want to know how I know that we're not the reddest area in the state? Because stuff like this is going on. The answer to speech you don't like is more speech. This is the cornerstone of what we're doing here. Okay. Wow, I had no idea I was going to get so wrapped up this morning, but here we are. Uh, we'll take your thoughts on this on the other side. Uh, phone lines are open, 907-433-3150. 907-433-3150. If you want to sound off, tell me your thoughts on this with the, you would be okay with this. We're also going to talk about TikTok. And, uh, some craziness that's going on there. We'll be back. The Michael Duke Show, common sense radio.
Listened to by more staffers in Juneau than any other show because their bosses told them to. And after what they just heard, oh man, they're going to be best.
You're a bad, bad man.
The Michael Duke Show.
Okay. Let me go back up here and see what you guys are saying. Yeah, um, there we go. Dunleavy never called the show, but his clown psychic calls one afternoon show. What? Uh, okay. Not burdening citizens trying to remember, oh, they were still talking about election days. Okay. This is a physiological issue and should be deemed as a potential danger to themselves. There are laws stating that they have a responsibility to report this to parents, et cetera. Exactly. Yeah, I mean, you know, your kids can identify, I don't care what people want to identify as something, that's fine. But as a parent, I want to at least be informed as to what's going on. Regardless of whether I support it or don't support it or whatever. I, you know, again, I'm, I'm very much live and let live. If you want to marry your toaster, you go for it, right? But as a parent, I want to know what's going on in my kid's mind. I want to know what the thought process is. I want to know that this is happening. That is, you know, uh, do not make the PFD an entitlement, treat it as a dividend. Randy, I love you, my friend, but my God. Um, are you, um, let's see. Uh, it's all BS, says Melody. She's talking about the school board things. Exactly. They can only blame themselves. I mean, that's it. That's the thing. The school boards that are going through this and are feeling the pressure only have themselves to blame because of the policies that they've been passing. Terry says, here we go again, fighting with the school board, no limits. I have the faith that Matsu will get that changed. Well, I don't. The only way they're going to get it changed is for people to get up off of their rusty dusties and go actually vote on some of this stuff. I mean, Melody says, I hate, I hate this because I've been at MSBSD meetings until midnight to testify. All voices need to be heard. Yes. Even if it is till midnight. You, again, that's the whole point of this, this participatory sport. Jennifer says in Fairbanks, they cut the LGBTQ month testimony off in Fairbanks School Board Meeting two weeks ago. Lots of conservatives showed up. I mean, this is, this, to me, there are very few things that I really, really get upset about. But when you cut off the citizen's right to testify, to have their voice heard in front of their elected officials, that is egregious to me. Anytime that they would vote to cut off testimony at the assembly because of time and everything else, I'd vote no, because I, no, I mean, they're here, we're here, let's sit down. I've already thing, I'm already going to go to sleep and, and not have a lot of sleep tonight. Let's just go ahead and get it done. We need to hear what the people have to say. They've all, we've all been inconvenienced at this point. Just listen to it. Gordon, you're not wrong. According to the school boards, we're just the riffraff and they are the educated no betters. Be ungovernable. Jennifer Cronk, we allowed all tests. Okay, I'm sorry, uh, refuse to be silenced. I refuse to be silenced, said Melody. Melissa said, Jennifer Cronk, we allowed all testimony. It went for two hours, covered throughout the rules. We're only allowing hour, we allowed two. So they didn't cut it off. They actually went longer than they, which is what you should have done. The rules should have been suspended. If there is a room full of people and your rules say one hour, but there are 50, 60, 100 people in the room, you should suspend the rules for that. You should call on the chair, suspend the rules and say the people deserve to be heard. You know it. Wow, wow, wow. I'm just seriously agitated right now. Just seriously agitated. Where is my, I was going to show that where is my T-shirt thing? The ungovernable thing. Uh, here it is. Is that it right there? Um, let me see, can I, I'm going to see if I can snap. I'm going to see if I can, uh, show you a quick snap. Shot, shot of this here this morning. Come on, I'm the show. I'm asking it to, uh, to do way too much. Uh, split desktop. Okay. Source. Let me show you this real quick, real quick, real quick. There it is. Bring it to the front. This is a T-shirt I'm working on. So that you can, that's the T-shirt I'm working on right now. All right, uh, I'm trying to put it all together. That's, I'm working on the font and everything else. So just so that you guys have an idea of what it's all about. I just saw Brian's comment and that made me want to do it. All right, here we go. The Michael Duke Show.
The Michael Duke Show, seriously humorous with a pinch of intellect. Pinch of intel, sorry. That is humorous. Here's Michael Dukes.
Okay, uh, welcome back. Last segment of hour one this morning. Nick Begich III is going to be joining us, uh, in hour two. Candidate for US House, uh, he'll be joining us to talk about his, uh, upcoming, uh, run and, uh, what he sees going on. I'm sure we'll be talking about shutdown and budgets and math and arithmetic, which seems to be the thing that Nick and I get a chance to talk about almost every time we get together here. Uh, meanwhile, uh, phone lines are open for this last segment. If you want to sound up, we were just talking about the, the, uh, school board in the Matsu shutting down testimony and basically turning it into a lottery of some kind. Um, but, and somebody said something about people cutting off the testimony at the Fairbanks School Board. And then Melissa, who's a member of the school board, said, we actually allowed more than was, you know, that we allowed all, it went on for two hours and we're only allowed one hour according to the rules. We threw out the rules, basically suspended the rules and we allowed to, and that's what should happen. If the rules of the, of the body say, well, we only get an hour of testimony, then you move to, I've done that. We've done that. We've moved to suspend the rules so that we can, you know, continue to have this testimony. The people took the time to show up out of their busy lives to come down and have a say. We should listen to it. When it got really nasty, um, when it got really nasty, uh, you, what they would do is they do testimony at the beginning and then they'd shut it down and go do through this whole droll. They do the whole assembly meeting and then they'd hold the rest of the testimony at the end. That's when they were getting really vindictive. Uh, I saw that happen, um, uh, a couple of times where, you know, they'd have an hour of testimony at the beginning and then they'd like, okay, we got to stop testimony and get on to the rest of the stuff. And I'm like, let's just finish the testimony. Let's just, you know, let, anyway, well, let's not make these people wait another two hours while we go through the humdrum, you know, business of the thing and then get their chance to speak. That makes no sense, but I mean, that's, that's how it is. All right, uh, let's go over to the final story of today. And you guys probably don't really care about this, but I see this again as a reminder that just because you're a Republican, just because your state is red or you're, it doesn't mean that it's doing the right thing. Now, we're going to talk for a second about TikTok. For those of you who don't know, TikTok is an app. It's like a video app. It's like 60, 90, two minute, three minute little videos that you can scroll through. I mean, which is like, kind of like Instagram or Facebook or whatever, but it's just the videos. Now I do have the TikTok app on my phone. Why? Well, because my daughters and my wife all enjoy TikTok and there are some hysterically funny things on there. There's also some really great commentary from various people. Um, is there some crazy and stupid stuff? Absolutely. Welcome to the internet, right? And yes, I know TikTok is owned by ByteDance and I know ByteDance is a Chinese company. And possibly, um, you know, they, the Chinese Communist Party could have access to ByteDance's information. But I know all that. I understand that. I'm not doing, I'm not too worried about China having access to the conservative TikTokers that I watch or the libertarian TikTokers that I watch on there or the video game TikTokers that I watch. I did, to me, that's irrelevant at this point. But government politicians, oh, they want to save us from ourselves. Attorney General, uh, Treg Taylor has joined 17 other Republican Attorney Generals in supporting Montana's ban on a social media platform, TikTok, in a brief this week in federal court. In a Monday filing, the state said the power, their powers include the ability to protect their citizens from deceptive and harmful business practices. The what? What? Montana became the first state in the nation to pass a law banning the use of the video sharing app, which by the way, is being challenged in court and will be overturned on First Amendment grounds. There's just no way you could say that. There's just no way you could say that that Montana Governor Greg Gianforte, Gianforte, who signed the ban into law, said it would quote, protect Montanans private data and sensible, sensitive personal information from being harvested by the Chinese Communist Party. No, we're just okay with it being harvested by Google and Facebook and Instagram and Snapchat and every other, we're okay with that, but not by China. Spokesperson for Governor Dunleavy said, questions on the decision to support the ban should go to the Department of Law. You're right, the, you're, the buck stops with you, Governor. Why would you? We believe these laws are written, uh, fully within the Consumer Protection Authority of the State to enact. If TikTok wants to operate within a state, they need to meet the consumer focused protections under state law, which they said they have. They have said that they would not share US user data with the Chinese government. Okay. I mean, do you have proof that they're not? Again, this is a free speech. I mean, I know that it's owned by a Chinese company and I'm still using it occasionally. It's not like I spend all day scrolling TikTok, but my daughters, my wife, they send me funny things and it was just easier to use in the app than trying to fiddle fart around with the other stuff. And there is some genuinely funny stuff on there. This is, I mean, this is a free speech issue. It really is. Whether you like Facebook or TikTok or what, I mean, whatever you like it or not. You have to, you have to acknowledge this is a free speech issue. You cannot protect people from themselves. If people don't know that TikTok is owned by the Chinese, some Chinese company. Then do your, buyer beware caveat emptor. You don't think that Apple and Google and Android and, and Facebook and Instagram and Gmail and all these other, they've got all kinds of information about you and you're worried about this. I mean, come on. Seriously. And then he went on to talk about it's for the children. It's for the children. Now, first of all, the app has a hundred million users across the US. A hundred million and you're going to try and. Okay. Um, anyway, uh, Treg Taylor went on to quote, recommendations from the American Psychological Association, which state that parents should take a multi-pronged approach to social media management, including time limits, parental monitoring and supervision and ongoing discussions about social media. Yeah, except that you're talking about banning it for everyone, not giving people a choice to make. This is the dumbest damn thing in the world. Get out, get off my lawn. Government trying to tell, what, you can't, we've got to protect you from yourself because you couldn't possibly make this decision on your own. You need to be saved. Get off my lawn, you filthy beggar. Oh. Now, the governor, the government, state-owned companies, the feds, they have banned the use of TikTok on state-owned computers and phones, but fine, that's your priority. I understand. I completely understand the potential there, completely. No problem. But people should be free to make their own choices for good or for ill. If it harms them, that is on them. If they don't do the right thing, that is on them, but they should be free to choose. Poor, poor pitiful child. You just couldn't possibly make that decision on your own. We are here, your betters are here to see that you survive this decision. Now just shut up and go sit in the corner and we'll, we'll give you what you need when we decide that you need it. That's what's going to happen. Screw you. Hard. Okay. Um, I gotta go. Uh, hour two dead ahead. Nick Beggage, our guest candidate for, uh, the US House Congress, uh, we're going to be back with that. I'm sure this is, is going to have a great time. The mood that I'm in. We will return to Michael Duke Show, common sense, liberty-based, free thinking radio. Back with more right after this. Don't forget to come check us out on Facebook. By the way, you could chat during the breaks. Go do it right now. Back with more after this. All right. All right. Here we go. I'm a little agitated, just a little agitated this morning. More I read about that, the more I just want to reach out and strangle somebody. Okay. I'm still going through all the comments here. See, a lottery is the only way they can control the narrative, says Jeannie. It's true. It's the only way they can control the narrative, especially who chooses. I mean, who chooses who gets picked? I mean. Uh, Terry says, that's why she, that's why she refuses to use it China. Well, I understand Terry. I understand your position. I fully support your position. Uh, but also if you cut everything that was Chinese out of your life. You'd be running around in your skivvies and walking everywhere. Half the stuff we use comes from China eventually. I know, I don't support the communist regime, I know, but you know what? I can't, I can only fix what I can fix. And Republicans wonder why they all lose the, uh, they lose all the time these days. Yeah. It's stupid stuff like this. Really? You're going to waste state resources joining a brief trying to ban an app? I mean, your phone comes from China, your computer comes from China, the television that you're probably watching or the monitor watching it on, half of them come from China, some from Korea, but you know. It's just. There are serious libertarians and there are some really creative people producing content on TikTok and there are some serious libertarian and conservative content. There are some great content out of there. And then there's just some funny, crazy cat video type stuff that just makes me laugh. I mean. Yeah, Trump, did Trump try to, try to ban TikTok? Sure. Just another dumb thing. That was done. Tyler says, the Freedom Party, the Republican Party, the Freedom Party. No. It's just, I'm, I'm just, oh. All right, I'm, I'm going through there. Naked protesters showing up to protest China. I have seen the light on what? Jesus. Son, you make no sense. You, you really just, you are all over the board. I mean, just all over the board. Beggage needs to step up, says Denise. Hopefully he has better handlers and advisors this time around. We'll see. Cat videos is where it's at. No, you know, that between the cat, that cat videos, the Karen's getting served videos and, uh, some of the libertarian and there's one old guy, uh, there's one old guy. He's not that old. He's my age, but he, I can't remember what his name is on TikTok, but I, I see him quite, cause I subscribe to his thing. And he'll sit there on the porch and lean over and he'll be telling you a story like it's back in the olden days, like in the eighties, when we ran free and wild. And it's like this, he's telling like, it sounds like, almost like a Lord of the Rings kind of thing. And it is just hysterical, just so funny. Some of the stuff that he does, it's just, it's a grazing, you know? Dad Bob veteran, that's it was, that was Dad Bob veteran. Yep, that's the one. Uh, he is so funny. I love watching his videos. And then there are some that are just crazy and you're like scroll right on by. Okay, it's fine. But yeah. But mostly I got it because my wife kept sending me these videos and I'm like, I don't have this app and I have to jump through all these hoops to get to actually view it. So I just downloaded the app. I didn't care. I mean, you know, what, I'm under, I'm already on every government watch list there is already. What, what, you know, what could the Chinese find out about me? But what do I care? Okay. Um, I see that, uh, Nick is in the chat room. So we're gonna, he's in the green room right now. So we might as well go over there and check his audio. We're going to check his audio. Hold still, my friend. We're going to check your audio. Don't go anywhere. Uh, Nick Beggage, uh, joins us right now. Hello? Check, check.
Hello? Check.
Hey.
Check, check, check.
Oh, you're, you're plenty loud. You don't have to yell. You're fine. You can talk, you can talk.
Okay.
You could talk normally. How, how are things going, my friend?
Going well. Things are going well.
Yeah, good. Um, I'm trying to get you to the other side of the screen. There we go. Got it. Little bit of a delay. All right. So, uh, we are coming up here on the, uh, ooh, I've got a bit of an echo. Um, I'm coming up here on the, uh, top of the hour break. We're going to jump back into it. So I'm going to put you back in the chat, uh, put you back in the green room and, uh, I'll, I'll add you in as soon as we get started. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right. I'm going to pull you back in there and we're going to start fresh. Uh, again, at the top of the hour, folks, I'm also going to refresh the broadcaster. So you'll see the, you'll see the screen, you know, like. You'll see that screen for a minute while I refresh the broadcaster so that everything is running, you know, well and everything. So good. Um, so we're going to do that here during the theme song. So you'll, the theme song will cut out for you, but it doesn't mean that we're not still here. We're just going to refresh everything and we'll be back in a hot second. But, uh, this thing is just getting a little chuggy and I hate that. I hate it when it gets chuggy. Um, okay. The Michael Duke Show continues, common sense, liberty-based, free-thinking radio. Like and share, like and follow. Let's, uh, let's get it going on. Let's do it.
Whoa, buddy. Put that thing back in its holster. We haven't gone anywhere. I don't understand. Check out the MichaelDukesShow.com for information on how to get access to the podcast.
Welcome to the party, pal.
It is time to get a new perspective.
We know just what you need and we've got just the cure. Open wide and prepare for steaming hot cup of freedom.
I just don't fathom it.
The Michael Dukes Show streaming live across.
The world. Live around the world on the internet at MichaelDukesShow.com. It's the state of Alaska on your favorite radio station and/or FM translator. It is Alaska news, all the news that fits print. That's what we do each and every day, talking about what's going on here in your, um, I mean, just everything right here. Boom, welcome to it. Good morning. Thursday edition of the show and today we've got a full hour, uh, in hour two with you here. We're going to be jumping into it, uh, here in just a hot second with Nick Beggage, candidate for US House for Congress. Uh, he's going to be, uh, talking with us about some of the things that are going on, uh, out there in the world. Coming up tomorrow, it will be Firearms Friday. Yay. Uh, should be, uh, I'm working on Jacob Sullivan. I've been trying to get Jacob Sullivan from recent magazine on this program for the last six weeks. So fingers crossed we can get him on tomorrow to talk about, uh, Gresham Luhon, Michelle Grisham, whatever, the new Mexican governor who decide, who lost her mind and decided to suspend the constitution. We'll, uh, we'll talk about that tomorrow with him. Plus Chris Chang, Top Shot Champion, Chris Chang will be here and Willie Waffle. Busy day tomorrow as well. All right, that's it. So that's for tomorrow. Pay attention to that. Right now, let's, uh, go ahead and get into it. We're going to jump right on over to, uh, all the phones and our guests. Uh, we're going to start things off, uh, Nick Beggage, uh, this morning, joining us. Good morning, my friend. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing this morning?
You know, I'm doing, I am doing okay. It's, uh, I, I was a little wound up there and I was afraid for you that you were going to have to come on here and I was going to be all wound up about things. But, uh, I'm feeling like, uh, I'm kind of settled down a bit here and everything else. So, uh, it's been a bit since we talked. Let's, uh, let's get things started here. How things been going for Nick Beggage here as he gets his campaign ramped up? Uh, I mean, early and often, right? We want to vote early and often. That's the whole point. So we're trying to get the, get the word out there, Nick. Tell us, uh, how are things been going?
Things have been going well. We've been getting a really strong, uh, reception across the state. Uh, folks are excited about, uh, the campaign and, uh, I think there's a lot of folks that are really paying attention to what's happening in DC right now. Um, we're seeing a lot of, uh, important discussions that are happening even as we're on the air. Uh, folks are voting on the Defense Appropriations Bill, uh, in the House this morning. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, I think healthy debate about, uh, how long we continue to allow business to, to, to go on as usual. And, um, I think it's important for us as a nation to, to start having those, those discussions, uh, in a different way. I think, um, if we continue down the path that we've been going down as a nation, um, we know where that leads. It's going to lead to higher debts, higher deficits, uh, and a debt spiral that's, that's really going to be impossible to overcome.
Um, Nick, you and I talk a lot, uh, and have in the past as well. Uh, it seems like every time we, we come on, we talk about the reality of arithmetic, right? That the basic maths, it seems like every person in Congress, the all 500 plus of them seems to, with a handful, with the exception of a handful of them, seems to have basically flunked basic math to understand that the, you know, as much as you take in, as much as you go out. I mean, that, this is what we're faced with right now. I mean, this is the problem in America. We passed, uh, what, eight, nine days ago, we passed the 33 trillion dollar mark in debt. And it was crickets. No mainstream media outlet was talking about it. Nobody was really mentioning it. If it was, it was a one sentence throwaway sentence. There was no deep dive into this whole idea. This is, I mean, we are facing a crisis, a future crisis. They're saying that the debt by the end of the decade, if it stays on the same trajectory, will be over 50 trillion dollars. That's, that's insane. This is a math, this is simple arithmetic in the long run, right?
That's right. I mean, $50 trillion at the current, uh, interest rates, you're talking over $2 trillion a year in interest. And, uh, we just passed a trillion dollars in interest payments for the first time in our nation's history this year. Interest payments have now exceeded, uh, the, the budgetary spend for national defense. I mean, national defense is what we were just talking about. That's that Defense Appropriations Bill is what's, uh, up for review in the House right now. And, um, you know, the, the big elephant in the room is this, is this ballooning, uh, debt and rising interest rates. And you're a hundred percent right. Uh, a lot of folks down in DC either didn't pass math or, you know, they're not really interested in what the numbers have to say because they're more interested in, in making sure they make it through the next election. And, um, this is not a can that can continue to be kicked. It's something that if you do not intervene right now structurally, you will not have the opportunity to fix the problem. As you say, by the end of this decade.
So let's, uh, you were just talking about again, the Congress right now is looking at the Defense Appropriation Bill, which is again, one of the stumbling blocks they have until the 30th of September to pass some kind of, uh, budget or continuing resolution or whatever, otherwise a government shutdown. There's a lot of lamentation from everyone, uh, apparently, uh, that there are five or six Republicans who are kind of dragging their feet, saying this can't continue. This has got to stop. Um, and of course, the biggest challenge here, the biggest danger is that some of the more moderate Republicans will just go cozy up with the Democrats and make others, some kind of spending bill. Where would you stand? If you were in Congress today and this bill was in front of you, uh, with, again, defense spending and aid for Ukraine and all this other kind of stuff, what, I mean, where, what would Nick Beggage be doing? What would you be saying on the floor? Give me your house speech on the floor and how you would vote on this bill and on the continuing resolution or the budgetary process now.
Well, I think the continuing resolution, um, continues government, uh, as usual and government as usual is what got us, uh, to this, to this point. We have got to go, uh, back to regular order, restore regular order in the House, regular Regular order requires the committees to put forward their 12 appropriations bills. And those 12 appropriations bills give us the opportunity to go line by line in the government budget and make sure, uh, that what we're spending American taxpayer dollars on is in fact something that's necessary, uh, something that's going to, uh, be in compliance with the core mission of government under the constitution. And until we can restore regular order, uh, we're not gonna get a hold of this, uh, fiscal imbalance. And I, I think it's, we're at a point right now in our, in our nation's history where restoring, uh, that balance is not just something we should do, but something we must do. And, uh, so I would be in favor of restoring regular order, going through all 12 appropriations bills, line by line. And I think a continuing resolution, again, just continues to support the Joe Biden, Nancy Pelosi spending, uh, priorities that they have put in place over the last two years plus.
Well, I mean, and this continuing resolution is not a democratic problem. It's a politician problem, right? I mean, this is, we've been doing continuing resolutions. I don't, I don't think we passed a balanced budget in 20 years at this point. We've been running continuing resolutions this whole time. So you would not vote for a continuing resolution. You want to go back to the rules as normal where Congress has to pass a, you know, specific set, a dozen, 12 different budget bills to actually create a budget instead of just, oh, we're just gonna go ahead, go ahead. So you would vote against the continuing resolution and vote to go back to normal or order.
I don't, yes, I don't think we have a choice. And this was part of the agreement that was struck within the Republican conference. When we were, uh, encountering the debt ceiling, uh, earlier this, this year. So we were, we were hitting, bumping up against the debt ceiling. There was an agreement made, uh, that said, look, we're gonna restore that regular order. We're gonna go back to those 12 appropriations bills process. And Congress, you know, suddenly we, we have this big emergency, right? Everyone's talking, oh no, we're gonna run out of time. Congress is coming off of a six week recess. A six week recess where they weren't voting. They weren't in DC. They were back in their districts. They knew, they knew what the calendar looked like. And at any point, leadership could have said, hey, you know what? We've got a lot of work to do. This is not a time to take recess. We've got until September 30th to pass these bills. Let's come back and do the work of the people. Let's come back and work weekends. Let's come back and do what is necessary to get these 12 appropriations bills done. They didn't prioritize that. So this isn't a surprise for anyone. It's just a changing of priority. And, uh, I think that anyone who was looking at a calendar, who was close to this process would have understood very clearly, this is not gonna get done in time unless we re-prioritize the calendar.
Um, well, yeah, re-prioritize until we go back to the business as it was intended instead of business as you. I mean, this has been going on for 20 years, Nick. So this has kind of become business as usual, instead of business as it was intended. Right? I mean, that was the thing.
That's right.
They kind of, Congress has abrogated their responsibilities. They basically said, well, that's just too hard. Having 12 different bills that we have to fight on, coming out of committees and we have to vote on. And also it takes the power away from the speakers. They can't control it as much when it comes out of committee. They can't direct where things are going. Instead of the power being distilled down into the hands of a very few, business as intended would spread that power out to actual representatives and elected officials. And boy, we just can't have that, even, even for Republicans. I mean, again, this is not a Democrat. It's not just Joe Biden and Nancy Pelosi and Chuck Schumer. It's Kevin McCarthy. It's Mitch McConnell. It's all these people who are in power. I mean, you go watch Thomas Massey's, his, his, uh, um, he did a video series about his first days in Congress and how eye opening that was in his first days in Congress. And he was like, I came here to represent my people and all they want to do is run my life from day one and I can't do. This is insane. I mean, that's exactly, the problem is not Republican or Democratic. It is politicians who believe that the rules of the universe, mostly entropy and arithmetic do not apply to them.
That's right. You know, and I, I think, uh, we've been permitted sort of to believe that that's true for a long period of time. Part of the reason that we believe that that's true is because the US dollar is the world's reserve currency and it allows us to, for a period of time, appear as though we can levitate, appear as though we can continue to print money with no consequence. And, uh, and there won't be, there won't be an effect. And eventually people start to actually believe that. And, um, the, the problem with that sort of thinking, we've seen this sort of thinking, uh, over many, many years with other reserve currencies. So if you think back, uh, prior to the United States dollar being the world's reserve currency, there were other reserve currencies. There was, there was the British pound, uh, Spain, France, Portugal. All of these nations at one point or another, uh, represented the world's reserve currency and they lose that status. They lost that status because of the same, uh, forethinking that we are, uh, embracing right now as a nation. This idea that you can spend, uh, without consequence and that this, uh, reserve currency status is permanent.
And this is a little bit down into the weeds. We start talking about world reserve currency, breadbasket currencies, all these other kind of things. Uh, and we've been talking about this, uh, on the program. I've been talking about this for probably 10 or 15 years that it's a danger. And it is more likely today than it was 15 years ago that another world reserve currency will come up to challenge the dollar. We're talking about BRIC. We're talking about the Saudis and the OPEC and trading in Euro in, uh, in, uh, Petro dollars and some of these other things. Uh, there are other options out there and they are being explored at a rapid pace. Now, will it happen tomorrow? No, but here's the thing. If it does happen, if the, if the dollar stops being the world reserve currency, that's a problem. I mean, that, that is a mega problem. The monetary, you, you keep talking, you talked about England and France and Spain. Yes, they were all the world reserve currency at one time. And you're right, because of their destructive monetary policies, that's why they stopped being it. It eventually happened. And if we keep following that same path, maybe it's this year, maybe it's 50 years from now, but it will be, this will be our same problem.
That's true. I mean, when you look at, uh, the debt to GDP ratios of major nations around the world, um, the highest by far right now is actually Japan. And when you look at Japan, uh, the Japanese yen to the US dollar, um, it's slipped dramatically in the last two to three years. I think it's off, uh, maybe 40%. And, uh, when that happens, you experience significant inflation. If you think inflation is, is rough in the United States, try one of these other nations where their, their local currency is, is slipping off the map, right? And so here's a, an industrialized world. This is not a third world country. We're talking about Japan here. Um, well-developed, but, uh, you know, they have, they have spent beyond their means for so long that people can't continue to absorb all of the yen that they've been printing. So that's a case study in what can and will happen to the United States down the line if we don't, uh, put a stop to what's been happening in DC right now.
Nick baggage is our guest candidate for US Senate. We are going to take a quick break. And when we return, we'll have some more questions for him, some questions from the chat room. And we'll talk about where, you know, what, what would be his priorities going into, uh, uh, going into Congress, what needs to happen there. We're gonna continue on the Michael Duke Show. Common sense, liberty based, free thinking radio. Nick baggage, our guest back with more right after this.
Running on 100% pure beard power. Oh, also some coffee. We dip our beard in coffee.
Ha, nice beard.
The Michael Duke Show.
Okay, Nick baggage, our guest here in the chat room. Um, Nick, you have to hold on just a second here. I've got a caller on hold. He's been on hold for 12 minutes. I don't know. I should have turned the phones off apparently. Let me see who's out there and remind them that we got a guest and we'll start fresh over here. Good morning. Who's this? Where are you calling from?
Hey, Michael, it's Nathan. I was actually calling in to ask a question to Mr. Baggage.
To ask a question of Nick? All right. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll allow it during the break here. We'll allow it. Uh, go ahead and ask your question of Nick. I'm assuming Nick can hear you. So go ahead and give me your question.
So in the, uh, previous election, uh, we had two good candidates, yourself and, um, uh, Sarah Palin and the, when I see our Democrat representative there, uh, Mary Potola, I, I don't see her elected because of her, um, principles. I see her elected because we had two candidates on the R side and one on the D side. And neither one of the Rs was willing to relinquish their pride and step aside. Um, would you step aside if the other candidate was doing better than you in the first part of the election?
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go.
Yeah, I think it's a fair question. Um, we did see.
All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Nick. Go ahead.
Uh, we, yes, you're, you're right. We, we saw, um, a situation where, you know, ranked choice voting was billed as, uh, this sort of panacea, this idea that, you know, we put this, this system in place, uh, you know, people are gonna rank that they're going to, uh, to, to advance candidates. Some even, uh, were saying that this would be good for Republicans in the state of Alaska. Obviously that, that wasn't true. Uh, I wasn't a supporter of this system, um, at the get go. And, uh, you know, I've signed the repeal petition as have probably tens of thousands of Alaskans at this point. But in 2024, we will have to deal with, uh, with this system. And, um, I would say this, there's, if you go back to the prior election, um, there were, you've got to make sure that whoever emerges out of the primary has the ability to win the general. That's the most important thing. And, um, certainly consolidating support, I think will be an important discussion that's gonna be had. Should there be additional Republicans in the race? I think our best bet here is, uh, to have a heads up, a one-on-one, um, with the Democrat and the Republican in this race. One thing that, that, uh, folks need to remember though, is the way that ranked choice voting works. Even if one person gets out of the race, another person who's also registered, that fifth person becomes the fourth place person. And that continues until there's no other candidates. And so in the last election, at one point there were, uh, I believe 50 candidates in the race. And so one person moves out, another person just slips right into their place. And, um, you know, I think that, uh, we need to be cognizant of that mechanic as well.
So that means I've, I've not to, not to pin you down, but that means you would or would not, if there was another candidate in the race that had a better shot, would you pull out and throw your support behind that candidate just to have the fourth, the fifth place move up to the fourth? That, I think that's the question here.
Yeah, I think the, I think it depends on who that fifth place person would be. Is that, are we talking about a Republican? Are we talking about a Democrat that would then, uh, move into that, uh, place? How do we define what doing better means, right? Someone that can pull a, a solid base of support, but has no ability to go and, uh, and, and appeal to say a moderate swing voter and therefore can't win an election. You know, that's, that's a problem too. So I think that that was something that we saw in the last election. You maybe we've had someone with a solid base, but maybe didn't have the ability to, to connect with that independent swing voter. And if you can't do that, you're not gonna be able to win the election. And the entire intent here is to, is to get a Republican here in office, a conservative in office.
So you're saying it's dependent on the situation? Is that what you're saying? Okay. So you would if the situation was right, but if not, you're gonna still fight the fight.
Whatever we need to do to make sure that we get a new representative in Congress is what I'm gonna do.
All right. Uh, we're coming up on it. The Michael Duke Show. Common sense. Thank you for your call, Nathan. Common sense, liberty based, free thinking radio. Here we go.
The Michael Duke Show. Seriously humorous with a pinch of intellect. Pinch of intel. Sorry. That is humorous. Here's Michael Dukes.
I mean, there's a pinch. Just depends on how big your fingers are, right? See, I got big hands, big hands. All right. Nick baggage is our guest candidate for Congress. Uh, we're talking with him about, uh, his run. Um, let me go back up here to a couple of questions that, uh, popped out here. Uh, and I thought this was an interesting question from Brian. I'm trying to pull it back here. Uh, uh, his question is, what is the role of government in this country? And from your perspective, what is the role of government? Uh, and I would add to that, how would you go about fulfilling that, executing it, making sure that's what we're doing and nothing more?
Yeah, you know, it's a great question. The, the role of government in this, in this nation is, uh, first off, to ensure that we are following the constitution, right? That is the foundational document, uh, by which all, uh, additional legislation and laws must be, must be tested. That we must provide for the common defense. Uh, that's important, something that's, as we mentioned in, uh, our earlier segment, it's happening today, a discussion around the defense appropriations, uh, bill. There's 12 appropriations bills that move, uh, through the Congress and arrive at the president's desk. Um, and those bills, including, uh, providing for the common defense, define, you know, that set of priorities that we have, uh, in the Congress. The way that this works, uh, constitutionally, all, um, spending bills should originate in the house. And the house holds the purse strings of this nation. So when we talk about, um, getting our fiscal house in order, we really have to look to the house to start that process. And, uh, and, and that's why I think it's, it's been good, although it's been, it's challenging. These, these jobs aren't easy. It's been good that, that members of the house have, uh, applied the brakes and said, look, we've got to make sure that we're, we're spending responsibly, that we are spending within, uh, the confines of our constitutional duty with respect to the role of government. And, um, and that's what's, that's what's happening right now.
So would you be joining these five? Would Nick baggage be the sixth of the five congressmen are out there putting the brakes on this and trying to shine a light on the, you know, maddening and insane fiscal policy that we're running right now? Would you be number six of that gang at this point sounding that from the rooftops?
Well, I think there's a lot, there's a lot more than six. Let me say this. There's a lot more than six. There's five right now.
There's five that, that are vocal, I guess. Would you become a member of that gang is what my question.
I would be very vocal. Absolutely. I would be as vocal or more vocal than, than I am right now and on our, on our, uh, segment. But, um, no, I think you, you've gotta be. And, and part of the role of, uh, these folks is to take that message to the public and make sure that, uh, the voting public understands, you know, why you're taking this stand. Because certainly the legacy media, the regime media wants to portray this as, um, as a group of people that are, are just trying to stymie government or their, or their grandstanding in order to fundraise. And that's not what any of this is about, should be about, uh, would be about. It, it, it's, it's actually very difficult, right? I, I ask people this question. Name more than 20 members of Congress on the house side. Most people can't do it. And, and, and most people who are close to the political process can't do it either. And there's a reason for that. The reason why, uh, someone's not, not generally able to, to name 20 members of, of the house is because, uh, there's not more than 20 members of the house that are, are sticking their neck out, right? What DC loves more than anything is a rank and file member who won't say anything and will just pull the lever the way they're supposed to every time that the, the message goes out from, from their conference. And, uh, the reason why we have some of these members, um, speaking out is because they're saying, look, this is, this is not going to continue to work for this country. If we do not take a stand and hit the brakes and apply pressure, uh, we're gonna continue to go off this fiscal cliff. And as you said earlier, whether that's five years, 15 years, 50 years down the line, it's going to happen if you don't have people of courage right now willing to stand up. So, uh, getting back to your question, would you be, uh, the sixth person? I'd be one of, of more than six. There's more than six, more than five, right? Uh, people that are having these discussions. Some are gonna vote yes on the appropriations bill today for the Defense Appropriations Act. They're gonna vote no for, uh, the CR that should come up this weekend. And so as we talked about earlier, I'd be a no right now on the continuing resolution because I need to, I need to see that we're gonna actually bring up all 12 appropriations bills. And, uh, before we start going down a, a road of continuing, um, business as usual.
So would you be, would you be voting no against the appropriations bill as well? Because like you said, I mean, so you're gonna, you would join them. You would be part of that crowd. Um, but would you join them, uh, far enough to say, no, we need to put a halt to everything until we address? Cause I think that's what's happening here. It's, I don't think it's that these members are necessarily against defense appropriations, although I have some questions about some of the things that are in there, right? Um, but at the same time, I don't think that they're doing it on principle of saying, we don't want the defense appropriations. They're using it as a lever to say, hey, we've got to have this conversation. So would you vote against the appropriation? If you were in Congress right this second, would you vote against the appropriations bill? And vote against the CR until Congress comes? And vote against the CR until Congress comes together to have the discussion about returning to business as it was intended?
So I would be a yes on uh, the appropriations, the defense appropriations bill, which is before uh, the House right now. But a no on the CR. And uh, I would be a no on the CR because I want to know what the um, what is the long-term plan for the remaining appropriations bills? I think we've got uh, nine or 10 additional uh, appropriations bills of the 12 that have yet to pass the House. And um, you know, we need to see that. We need to see what those spending bills are going to, are going to look like. And I think a vote for uh, the continuing resolution or what's called the CR just is a vote to continue the same priorities that Nancy Pelosi and Joe Biden and Hakeem Jeffries have, have advanced over the last couple of years. And I don't support those things. Um, I also, you, you mentioned what's in there, right? One thing that I, that I don't support um, is uh, additional funding for the conflict in the Ukraine. And I think that, that people are really starting to ask questions about uh, how much um, the, the Ukrainian government believes they're entitled to US taxpayer money. I think it was McCarthy actually who said uh, here this morning or yesterday, borrowing money from China so that we can give it to Ukraine doesn't make sense for the US taxpayer. And I think that's true. I think that we've got it, we've got to take a look at this and say, you know, how much is the US taxpayer going to spend for, for a conflict that's on Europe's doorstep, right? Even this morning, Poland said that they're pulling funding for the Ukraine war. And Poland borders these nations. This is, this is on their doorstep, literally, right? And uh, and they're pulling funding. Why should we be expected to foot the bill for this conflict?
No, I mean, I think that's a valid question. I mean, while I am uh, uh, you know, I find it abhorrent what Russia has done. And I support, you know, the, the folks of Ukraine. We have given billions of dollars to them already. Do we continue to just fund it in adven item, uh, you know, just indefinitely? Or do we, do we finally say, you guys are going to have to stand on your own? Um, or get more NATO support or other European support or whatever? We should not be footing the lion's share of this bill, especially in light of shipping all these weapons to Ukraine at the same time, those same politicians are saying, uh, you know, hey, small arms in America, you guys can't have these, but we can give them to Ukraine because they need to fight. I mean, there's a lot of hypocrisy going on here. And again, nobody wants to fight a proxy war. Uh, and that's exactly what it seems to be coming is, is becoming a proxy war.
It is. And I think that's, I think people need to recognize that. This is a very, it's a very dangerous road to go down. You know, obviously I don't support the aggression by the Russians in, into Ukraine. I think that's wrong. And I've been on the record as saying so from the very beginning. But um, you know, continuing to push for uh, conflict uh, as opposed to pushing for peace, which there have been multiple opportunities for uh, a peaceful resolution of this conflict that we could have been a part of, that we were a part of, and then backed off or, or occurs Ukrainians to continue to fight. Uh, you know, I think it's dangerous. Um, you know, folks need to recall that Alaska is sort of first line of defense for um, for missile defense for our nation, right? Uh, we're early warning up here. And uh, continuing to go down a road in which we fight a proxy war with a nuclear armed power, it just doesn't make sense to me. I don't understand uh, why that is of strategic value to the United States. Oftentimes you hear folks out of DC neo con saying, hey, uh, you know, we need, we need to do this because it weakens Russia. I don't, I don't think that's a good idea, and I don't think it weakens Russia. I think in the long run, it pushes Russia over to China. And uh, we've seen them strengthen their strategic alliance with China as a result of um, some of the pressure that we've applied. So in the end, I, I think this is part of a long line of, of interventionist approaches that the United States has taken that oftentimes backfire. And uh, we pay uh, a heavy price for it down, down the road.
Well, especially given Russia's renewed interest in the Arctic and the fact that they're opening up new bases all along the coasts of the Russian Arctic, uh, facing Alaska. Of course, they've got big military exercises going on in the Bering Sea right now. Uh, on the, in the international waters, their missile launches, cruise missile launches and all different kinds of things. Some of it's just posturing, but they are definitely investing in this area. Alaska will be at the tip of the spear with Russia as far as America goes. I mean, they're obviously facing Europe on the other side, but on this side, Alaska will be at the tip of the spear for that kind of stuff. And we need to really be paying attention to that.
That's right. My understanding is that uh, Joint Base Elmendorf Richardson, Jay Bear here in Anchorage uh, is now um, slated to become the most strategic base that we have in the nation. And it's because of that. It's because of all the reasons that you just stated. That we have uh, that there's been such an investment made by uh, the Department of Defense recognizing uh, Alaska's strategic importance in sort of that global theater going forward.
Nick Beggage is our guest. We're coming up on the next break. Uh, when we come back, we're going to talk about what Nick's uh, you know, first days in office would look like. What is he going to be focusing on? What is he going to factor in? What is he going to try to change? Again, as one of several hundred members, what are you going to try and change? And uh, let's see what, uh, see what it comes out through. Uh, Nick Beggage, our guest, The Michael Duke Show continues. We got more coming up. One final segment dead ahead with Nick Beggage. Common sense, liberty based, free thinking radio. Here we go. Back with more right after this.
Your mental suppository. The Michael Duke Show.
I don't know what we're trying to say there, but we're trying to say something cleaning you out from the inside. Nick Beggage, uh, our guest. There's been some criticism that, that, there's some criticism in the chat room that your answers are long-winded and you're, you're going long. But I agree with what Donna is saying here. Donna says, Nick gives long answers because he's clearly thought a lot about these issues, but I heard a definitive no on a deficit spending continuing resolution and definitively will do whatever is needed to replace Pell toll. So I mean, I would agree with both of those comments. Um, as far as the whole question about people dropping out and whether we should or not, I'm, here's my two cents, folks. I think Nick was the best man for the job in the last election. Uh, he got my vote. Palin may have been ahead according to some of the polls or the numbers or whatever. But again, I think, I, I don't think she would have made a great Congresswoman. Uh, that's just, that's just my opinion. Um, and I think if you are in it to win it, if you're in it because you believe that you are the best candidate, that I, I just, I would, I would not criticize somebody for not dropping out because they believe that they're the best candidate. I, I just, that's just me personally. You guys can take, you know, take it as what you will or whatever. But I, I would say that if you think that you're the best candidate, the answer to would I drop out is no. If you think you're the best candidate, whether you are behind in the polling or not, that's just my personal opinion on that. So uh, you know, take it for what it's worth. Nick has had more thoughtful answers on this program than any other candidate that I've had on this program in a long time. He thinks about these issues and uh, and I mean, I, I, I just think it, I think it's good. I think people are all hung up on the, the past, hung up on the past and the whole Palin thing and everything else. I never thought she was a good candidate, quite honestly. I thought it was, I thought it was a PR stunt more than anything else. That's my personal opinion. You guys can think about it what you want, but I just, I'm not into that. And then Gail says, Dukes, they all think they're the best candidate. Yes. I mean, I agree. I, I, you, you cannot do the job if you don't think that you're the best candidate. Should Palin have bowed out because Nick had a deeper background and more understanding of what was going on? And paid more attention and worked harder? Should she have bowed out? No. They all felt that they were the best candidate. There you go. Nick, before we jump in here, we're going to, uh, we're going to come into what you, I want to expand on this Ukraine thing for just a second. Because while I feel, here's my problem. I'm torn on this because if we, if we, we force them to sue for peace, this rewards the behavior of Russia. So while I don't necessarily want to continue to spend billions of dollars fighting a proxy war, at the same time, I am leery to give, to, to reward Russia for their behavior, because that could just embolden them in the long run. Now, they've expended a ton of resources and materials on this war. In fact, they've depleted a significant part of their warfighting arsenal. So I don't know if we encourage them just to fight it on their own, or if we encourage them to fight, to, to sue for peace. I just hate to, I hate to reward a bully in the long run. So your thoughts on that?
Well, I think it's an important counterpoint, but um, you know, I, I don't think anybody wins coming out of this conflict, no matter what happens. You've had hundreds of thousands of people just on the Ukrainian side, either been killed or injured in, in this war. And Russian losses, depending on who you believe, although that's sort of impossible to know um, right now, uh, are probably uh, similar, right? In terms of their, in terms of their losses. And this, these are human beings, right? These are, these are human beings. These are families. These are, these are uh, wives and, and, and brothers and sisters, uh, you know, so I don't think anybody walks away with this saying, hey, we won, we were rewarded. We did, you know, we came out ahead. I, I don't think anybody's going to, going to believe that historically. I also uh, would question um, what the consequences of not resolving this might, might be. And uh, if we allow this to continue, how far will uh, the Russians go or the Ukrainians go or others? Uh, we just saw this last week, conflict breakout in Azerbaijan. Which, you know, is geographically nearby. And you know, if you don't, if you don't work toward peace, if you don't find ways to resolve these conflicts, they have the potential to spill over into other regions. And that's, that's when you do get uh, the, the conditions for a, a world or global conflict or certainly an expanded regional conflict.
No, I mean, I agree with that. Um, that, that is a potential and that is a possibility. But again, the idea that uh, a nation can, can invade another sovereign nation, fight a little bit, expend a bunch of resources and then come away with more land and, and by capturing and it just, it's seeing, it, it, it just, it's wrong to me. It's wrong to me to reward that because I think that in the long run, you keep talking about pushing Russia more towards China. You will push them to be more of the same. If they know that they can just expend it and go into other countries, then you know, that, that's a, it's a challenge. This is a challenging time. There's no doubt about it. All right, we're 20 seconds out. We're going to rejoin here and we're going to uh, talk with Nick about first days and see what's going on. Uh, what his thoughts are, if he takes the chair and what is, what are his first days in Congress look like? What is he going to be fighting for? The Michael Duke Show, common sense, liberty based, free thinking radio. Like and share, like and follow. Here we go. All right, we're continuing with Nick Beggage, our guest candidate for Congress. Final segment of the show this morning. So Nick, um, you know, I got the magic wand. I wave it over you. You're now Congressman Nick Beggage. You're, you're in your first days in Congress. What are your priorities as you get started? What are the things you're going to fight for the most? And again, understanding, I got to, I got, I've mentioned it once already, but watching Thomas Massey's uh, video blog about his first days in Congress was just, it was terrifying, chilling and just ridiculous all at the same time. But you know, knowing all that and knowing what you're getting yourself into, what are your first days going to be like as you go forward?
Well, let me say, I, I have seen that, that segment, um, some of those, those clips from Thomas Massey's first days in Congress. And I, I think a lot of members probably feel similar to, to, to Thomas Massey, Representative Massey. I mean, uh, Congress is um, it's dysfunctional. And part of the reason it's dysfunctional is because the amount of money that has to go into these campaigns in order to put together a campaign. Running a, a US congressional race, it's, it's a, it's a minimum of a million dollars, usually two is table stakes. And so a lot of times these members, instead of doing the business of uh, of representing the people are out there making phone calls and having fundraisers 24/7 in order to fund the, the next election, which in the House is only two years away. So I think that's sort of where the problems begin. But getting back to um, your question, you know, I think uh, there's 400, look, there's 435 members, uh, the House and the Senate run on a seniority based system. You can, you can, you can hate it, you can like it, you can, you can see merits or, or demerits to it, but that's the way the process works. And so as a freshman walking in, I don't care who you are, you're not going to have a, a lot of authority. But what you do have is the ability to speak. You have the ability to go into committees and convince members of the importance of your priorities. My priorities are opening up uh, the resources of Alaska, telling Alaska's story uh, to the 434 other members of the House. What we've seen with the Biden administration is over 50 targeted orders that target just Alaska. Just Alaska. And um, you know, that's wrong. And, and I've heard, I've heard Senator Sullivan and others say, look, you know, if, if there were 50 executive orders that targeted the state of Delaware, Joe Biden would be up in arms. And we've come, become accustomed to it up in Alaska because we, we believed, well, you know, this is, it's different up here. It's this, it's that. We're a state, folks, and we were promised certain things under the statehood uh, compact and under a NOKA. And those rights have been denied to us as Alaskans and as Americans. And I think what people need to understand is that Alaska, as nearly 20% of, of the US landmass, offers a tremendous amount in the way of not just oil and gas, which is abundant here. But critical minerals, base metals, precious metals, rare earths, and all the things that we need in order to drive uh, US-based domestic supply chains start here and end here with US manufacturing. So um, if we're going to be successful in pivoting uh, away from China for manufacturing, if we're going to be successful in making sure that there remains a domestic industry that's beyond just assembly and uh, and consumer uh, goods, we're going to have to make a better case for, for Alaska in the Congress, and that's going to be my goal down in DC.
Well, let's talk for a minute about some of the uh, actions by the Biden administration and more. Again, now shutting down NPRA, shutting down, and you know, ANWR, any of the federal leases, all these other kinds of stuff. The pressure on the finance industry to steer clear of Arctic investment and some of these other things. Uh, I mean, how do you fight that? Like you said, your one voice, how do you fight that?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a team effort. Certainly that's something that uh, the House rep, the governor's office, the Senate offices all have to work together to fight that because we have a small delegation. We, we have the smallest of delegations with only three, three members in Congress as Alaskans. And so you have to work together. No matter who's there, you got to work together on these issues. When you talk about uh, you know, some of the orders that have recently come down, Joe Biden has made it clear, and he made it clear when he ran for president uh, the first time. He wants to end fossil fuels. These are his words. And so I don't know why folks are surprised when he takes the actions that he does, or his, those around him take the, take the actions that they do. Because the president has made it clear, he wants to end fossil fuels. He has said, no additional drilling on federal lands, period, period, period. That's his quote. And so when he comes out and says he's going to cancel the ANWR leases, when they say they're going to take 13 million acres of land out of uh, the NPRA for leasing, 3 million additional acres on the Beaufort Sea uh, for potential leasing. This is completely consistent with everything that he campaigned on and everything that he said since the campaign. And um, I think that in order to, to change this, we're going to have to change the president. We're going to have to change Senate leadership, but we do those things and they're, these are achievable things. We can advance uh, priorities for the state of Alaska in a way that moves uh, moves things forward for Alaskans, but also for this nation in terms of energy security and mineral security.
Uh, Gail asked in the chat room, she says, our current reps, including former Congressman Young, couldn't get a lot of this done. Why do you think that you can do better in that regard?
Well, I will say, uh, Congressman Young passed ANWR out of the House 14 times. He did what he had to do. And he made that clear over and over. Look, I've gotten this thing out of the House over and over and over again. And it got over to the Senate and uh, it passed a couple of times. The, the one time it passed, it was, it was uh, vetoed by the president. But it takes that alignment, right? It takes that alignment. Anyone who steps in to, to these conversations, runs for one of these uh, races and makes a bunch of promises about the idea that they themselves are going to be able as, as some sort of an emperor to get all this done on their own, they're not telling you the truth. That's not how this process works. You have to be able to get alignment across all, uh, all three of those bodies, right? The executive branch, the Senate and the House have to agree. And if you can't do that, these things don't get done. So uh, I would, I'm not going to sit here and promise that I'm the person that can make these things happen. And again, anyone who tells you that is lying to you or doesn't understand how the process works.
Right. You're just going to do your best. You're going to fight it.
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
Um, I saw some commentary and there's been some backroom chatter, uh, the, one of the- I saw some commentary and there's been some backroom chatter. The, one of the chairs of the NRCC was up in the state of Alaska here, here in the last few days. That's the National Republican Congressional Committee. And they're saying that they see this race as the most, this is the pivotal race in the US, the race between you and Peltola, the race for this seat, which means I think that they're going to be, this is going to be a heavy season. I think that's what it's saying. You're going to see a lot of, you said, you know, you have to have $2 million seed money just to walk into the, to the game to begin with. Now you're going to see all this extra additional stuff from the outside. I'm assuming the Democrats probably feel the same way. They don't want to lose. They've just got this freshly minted Democratic senator who takes a lot of vacations from what I've seen. But I mean, you know, is ready to go and do their thing. What are your thoughts on this race? I mean, how tough this race is going to be and how much money, you know, the exposure, what we're going to see?
It's, I'll tell you what, I have been hearing the same thing out of DC for many months, that this race has the potential to be the, the hottest race, the number one race in the country. And there's a reason for that. And I, I'll break that down. George, George, we have a thin majority in the House as it is. Okay. So we started out this Congress with, with a five-seat majority. We just had a member resign this last week on the Republican side. There'll be a special election in Indiana for that member. Steve Scalise is undergoing treatment for cancer and isn't able to make all the votes at the moment. So that puts us down to three. You've got a couple of members that are having some, some challenges, perhaps chief among them is George Santos. I don't see him coming back in the next, in the next Congress. And then we've got redistricting ballots across the country that have not gone the, the way that we'd like them to go for Republicans. And there's still pending litigation in states like New York that have the potential to, to flip red seats blue. So the House right now is a toss-up. And nationwide, there are about 20 seats that Republicans hold that Joe Biden won in 2020. Okay? There are only five seats that Donald Trump won in 2020 that Democrats hold. And one of those seats is in Alaska. And so this will be battleground. This is the most conservative district in the country that's represented by a Democrat. And I've been told that the numbers all in on all sides could be in the tens of millions of dollars for this House seat in the next election cycle. So people are taking this seriously. This is, this is going to be an intense process over the next year plus. But yes, there, there have been folks in the, from DC and elsewhere, coming to Alaska to learn more about the state. And hey, come to Alaska, learn, learn about the state. I'm glad they're here. Because for too long, we've been ignored. So it's nice to be on their map for a change.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's going to be interesting to see that Alaska, of all places, is now going to become one of the battlegrounds for this whole thing, which I mean, it's good for the advertising industry is all I could say. All right. Nick baggage, final thoughts here, 90 seconds. I'll give you the last word here on the radio and you get a chance to, to sound off here at the end.
Well, look, I don't think I need to, to, to say it, but I'm going to say it because it's part of, it's part of the process. But we've got some major challenges in this country. We've got some major challenges as a state. And the question that, that, that remains for Alaska and for this nation, what role is Alaska going to play going forward? What role are we going to play over the next five, 15, 50 years? Is Alaska going to be a nice place to visit? Just a place where people can show up and, and maybe, maybe take a tour, jump on a train, catch a fish? Or are we more than that? Are we more than that? Are we going to help to solve some of the, the significant challenges that our nation faces? Whether it's energy security, whether it's mineral security, Alaska has a role to play, but only if we have the right representation, representation in Congress to make Alaska's case. That's my goal. That's why I'm running. I want to make Alaska's case for Alaskans and for this country down in DC. I believe Alaska has an incredible role to play over the next several decades, if we can effectively make that case. And I'm excited about the opportunity to do so.
Nick baggage, candidate for Congress, alaskansfornickbaggage.com is where you can find him on the website. And of course, he's going to be out in about for the next 13 months. That's what we're looking at right now. Nick, thank you for coming on board this morning. We appreciate it. Hold the line for a second. Folks, we are out of time. Thank you for coming in tomorrow is Firearms Friday. Be kind, love one another, live well. We'll see you tomorrow. Okay, Nick, anything we didn't hit? Any item that I didn't bring up or, you know, whatever it is, I'd love to, love to hear what, love to hear what you have to say here in the last minute here. I'll give you the floor and just anything we didn't, didn't hit on.
Yeah, you know, I, I think we hit a lot, but I, there's been a thought that's kind of been forming in my mind over the last several days. And, you know, I think it's, it's the kind of thing that's been ever present for many of us, but it's become more clear to me. And I think that the Democrats, and really the socialist wing of the Democrat Party, has been remarkably effective at trying to shut private business down and replace it with government. And I think the long-term approach that they've taken is, how do we make government your be-all, end-all answer to every problem that you encounter in life? And, and that's the way they see the role of government. You know, there was a question earlier about what's the role of government? What do I see the role of government as? The Democrats see the role of government as solving all of life's problems. And private business and private industry is the enemy. And so when people talk about the government, and I'm using air quotes here, shutting down, you know, some people panic. They think this is, this is an absolute disaster. We can't live without the government. What are we going to do without the government? Well, you know, that entire mindset is based on the idea that the government's there to solve all of our problems and, and provide for all of us. Well, that's a socialist mindset. And too many people have bought into that. And, you know, for me, when we start thinking that way, we're, we've already lost the battle if we allow our minds to, to think like that.
Well, that's the narrative. The narrative is the only way society can move forward in a meaningful way is with the direct benevolent intervention of government. That somehow we just couldn't survive without it. Although we did find, for many years in this country, without any real strong form of federal government or federal leadership, or even state government in many places, with westward expansion and all that, we, somehow we just can't, society just can't move forward without it. And of course, in Alaska, we're a special case because we have created such a dependency state in this state. And everything that we're doing with state spending and everything else is bolstering that idea, like you said, of replacing private industry with government spending, whether it's childcare or anything else, instead of getting government out of the way and allowing entrepreneurship and the free market to work. That's a huge problem. I mean, that's a national problem, but it's specifically a problem here in Alaska. And it's a mind shift. We, I mean, it's a mindset shift that we have to push forward on.
It's true. When, when you look at, under the Biden administration, and I'm, I'm going to pick on the Biden administration, but this is true for a lot of administrations prior to the Biden administration. But when, when government attempts to increase, increase, increase the regulatory requirements for a business to operate, as they do that, they start to strangle that, that entity, that company, right? That entrepreneur. And they raise the barriers to entry for new businesses. They make it more difficult for existing businesses to provide those services and goods. And eventually people say, I can't make this work, right? And so this is, this becomes part of the impetus for why you see a lot of the manufacturing and other activity move overseas because they don't have those rules. And so when you buy a product from China, you're buying a product that was made under an environment with, with different regulatory structure, different environmental compliance structure, all these other things that we, you know, that they don't have that we have in this country. And so they get this natural advantage for production of goods and services over there. And so, you know, you see the Biden administration attempting to go back to rules that were written in the seventies and even earlier, and try to reinterpret precedent in order to make things even more difficult for the, the mining industry, the oil and gas industry, and so many other industries, construction industry under the waters of the United States. So they make this job harder and harder, more expensive for people to produce. And then they turn around and act surprised, wow, why isn't private industry doing more? Well, we're not doing more because you're straggling us. And
How do you get, how do you get innovators and disruptors into the market when you've got a bunch of crony capitalism and crony corporatism going on, where the government is putting in more rules and regulations, which are supported by the big, major corporate players? And then the small innovators, the small business guys, the entrepreneurs and the disruptors in the market with new ideas, they can't even get a seat at the table because they can't afford the compliance. They can't
Exactly right.
I mean,
That's exactly right.
It is, it's a complete abrogation of the free market. And it's, it, it's, it's a bastardization of it for sure. I'll leave us all with Randy's final thoughts. He actually had a really good, he actually had a really good point here, where it says, Randy says, the left has a secular religion, governmental omnipotence. And that's true. That's what the religion is. That's what the narrative is. They fully believe that, that only through governmental intervention can we succeed. And I think, I would like to think that Nick baggage believes exactly the opposite. If government would get out of the way, we could succeed.
That's right. Absolutely. And, you know, Reagan, Reagan said it best, government is the problem.
Yeah.
Government is the problem.
Government is the problem.
Yeah. When, when you look at what's happening right now, we talk a lot about deficits and debt and all these things. But what it, what does it really boil down to in, in the most basic terms? It's the government spending money they don't have destroying the money you have.
And destroying the, the machinery to make more money, destroying the machinery to make the, to let the economy go to boom, to do things. We're seeing that in the state for sure, that disconnect between the public and private economy, where they just, it doesn't matter what they spend. They don't care what's going on in the private economy because they're getting their money in a totally different source. So it doesn't matter. As long as government's doing okay, we're okay. When we're not, yeah, we're not. Nick baggage, candidate for US House. Thank you so much, my friend, for coming on board. It's always good to talk with you. I appreciate your deep thoughts on this. And we'll look forward to talking to you again soon.
Looking forward to it. Thanks, Michael.
All right. Thanks so much. Okay, folks, that means we are done for today. We gotta go. We're going to, we're going to go do our thing here. Enjoy, enjoy ourselves. That's what we're going to do. I gotta remove. There we go. Nope. Too many clicks. Too many clicks. Hey, look, let me just do that. All right. Okay, folks, we are out of time. We will see you tomorrow for Firearms Friday, your chance to sound off on issues of a two-way nature. Chris Chang, hopefully Jacob Sullum, Willie Waffle. It's all dead ahead. It's all coming up tomorrow. Thank you for being part of it. Common sense, liberty-based, free-thinking radio, The Michael Duke Show. See ya. Have a great day.